Our work session is called to order. Good to see each of you this afternoon. We will follow the agenda as posted with one minor exception. I know that is not customary that we would do formal votes in this particular meeting, but there is a matter of business that really needs to be taken care of because of a time factor regarding designees for grant applications. And Dr. King will briefly explain it to us, and we'll need to take action on it at the end of the meeting. It's just a matter of protocol.
Okay. Chairman Houston, members of the board, we would ask, superintendent would recommend that you take action that would allow me to pinpoint designees for the purpose of signing appropriate documents that would go to VDEOE in alignment with the reorg that is being implemented currently. And so it would simply reflect the following, which should not be new to you, Chief Operations Officer. Of course, position, Dr. Thornton will be authorized there, as well as interim Chief Academic Officer, Ms. Campson will be authorized for appropriate signatures there, in addition to, of course, Chief of Staff, any necessary authorization for signatures there. And so that's the essence of that recommendation.
Any questions on this matter?
So move.
Well, we can take care of it right now. That'd be great if you all are okay with that. That'd be much better. Okay, as a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. No, my apologies. Okay, properly moved and seconded that Chief Operations Officer, Chief of Staff, and the interim Chief Academic Officer become those designated signatures for necessary documents for the Department of Education. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Do we need a roll call vote on this? Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you. Motion carries, so it is ordered. Thank you very much. Okay, item 2.01, master milestones planning. Again, I would call our attention to the need for us to really respect the time that is designated for these particular items. I know that there may be times when we'll be a little shorter, perhaps a little longer, but we've designated times for presentation and times for discussion. And so please, let's be extremely mindful of it so that we can take care of all of our business in a timely and equitable manner this afternoon. Please and thank you. All right, Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board, item 2.01, master milestone planning will consist of pre-K followed by poverty targets, and I would expect poverty target discussion to merge into 2.02 with the transformation update with Lindenwood and J.Cock, so just a heads up on that. Master Milestone Planning, in reference to those items, will be followed also by CTE, High School Governance Model update, and as well as extended learning time to consist of items such as summer school, Saturday school, extended day after school, et cetera. We'll begin again with pre-K, and I will defer to Ms. Campson.
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, members of the school board, Dr. King. As we brought to your attention last month, we're very excited that our application for the pre-K initiative has been accepted. We have not yet received our official award letter, as the state of Virginia has not yet received their official award letter, but we have been notified that we were one of the districts to receive the grant. You have in your board docs a PowerPoint that has some details about it, but I'd like to just point out the highlights very briefly. With this new initiative, we will be able to service 207 additional four-year-olds in our pre-K program next year. We will be expanding to 10 classrooms, which will have space for 180 students, and we will have the additional 27 students will be participating in community partnership pre-K centers. We've already formed a partnership with ODU, and these students, some of these students will be attending the pre-K center there at ODU. We're in the process of developing partnerships with other community organizations for these centers. This is something we're very excited about, and if, as I said, I know you have your details in the PowerPoint that's in your notebook if you have any questions for me.
Is there any more on the pre-K aspect of the milestones aspect that you're going to discuss?
I didn't have anything else, just the highlights to report to you.
Okay. So my question is a question that I've asked for a while now, and it goes to the fact of our admission process, so to speak, for three-year-olds and four-year-olds in Norfolk Public Schools, is that of need, financial need, parental need? You have to have extenuating circumstances in order to qualify for pre-K education. So I wanted to know, was there a possibility that we could charge tuition in order to bring in some of those families that would, you would call them middle-class family, or those who do not qualify for the pre-K that we currently have? And could we charge some type of admission in order to offset the cost that it costs to operate a classroom for pre-K? And there was some discussion about whether or not it was legal, because we're a public school entity, in order to do that, but because we are not necessarily funded for pre-K, I think Dr. Sivigni was going to get back with me on that. So what's the status?
Well, at this point, you're absolutely right, and that's something that has been discussed and reviewed. At this point, of course, the board knows that we've been focusing on the waiting list, and we talked about the reasons why we were focusing on the waiting list in terms of the need to accelerate the rating, which we close gaps, that kind of thing, and children coming in ready. Of course, we are also proponents of the notion that quality childcare is good for all, good for 100 percent. And so funding then becomes the challenge, thus the reason why we introduced a discussion about possible tuition, et cetera. So that was presented to our attorneys, and they're reviewing for the implications in terms of whether we can do it legally, or whether it would require a modification in policy, or creating and developing a recommendation for new policy, and we should have that soon.
And again, it all goes back to the point of how does this district increase funding? And there's really only one significant way, and that's to increase your ADM, that that's our main source of funding. So if we can figure out a way to get new bodies in the seat that might come in at pre-K, be encouraged to stay with creative choice programs, and then continue on through middle school and the other choice programs that we have in high school, that would be a steady source of continuous income to come back to the district. And you're absolutely right, Dr. King, we need to concentrate on those kids that are on the waiting list because their need is great, but at the same time, to work simultaneously and bring some new blood into the district would be a good for the district and for the kids that live in Norfolk.
Right. I have a question. How much do we spend per student on pre-K?
I cannot answer that question at this point. Dr. Thornton may have access to it at his fingertips. If not, we will get to...
The reason being is that we'd have to charge at least that much to cover the cost for tuition-based programs.
I don't know the per pupil cost right now. Do you have...
Well, right now, we, in the current year, we budgeted about $11 million for pre-K program.
Right.
So I think we're serving 2,200 kids roughly. So if you do the math, 11 million divided by roughly 2,200 kids, that would generally be...
Five thousand per...
Yeah, that's the amount. So that would be the tuition that you have to charge.
Drop in the bucket compared to private education. And that, don't, again, you like to look at the Disney World model. When they walk through the line, they are not looked at as they're here just today to experience the park. They're looked at, how, what is the price tag?
Paying attention to it.
What is the price tag? Seriously, what is the price? They're worth $50,000. $50,000, so you get them in at pre-K...
I agree with you.
And that's where your investment pays off.
But you got to talk about facilities. I mean, there's a lot of issues.
We do, we do.
Not just matters...
Yeah, I agree, but it's something that I think that we need to be innovative with. We have a population out there. Trust me, I know, I'm working with them, and the need is there, and we should take advantage of the fact that we can bring them into Norfolk Public Schools and show them that an education in Norfolk Public Schools can be just as beneficial as going the alternative route.
Warren, and then Courtney.
I don't use the term universal pre-K because it has connotations that don't seem to work. What I have been interested in in Norfolk is more pre-K that leads to all pre-K. And in the very elaborate proposal that I saw, and it was certainly impressive, it identified pre-K 4 and pre-K 3 happening concurrently. And my question is, would it be better to deal with as many pre-K 4 as possible until all are reached before going into pre-K 3 in the immediate future? That doesn't mean that there aren't good reasons for doing it the way it was presented. Again, it was very complex, very exciting, but my thought is, why not do as much as we can to do, move towards pre-K for all, pre-K 4 for all, before moving to pre-K 3? And that's kind of a rhetorical question, but it also goes to the plans. And so that's just a question, and it may not be answerable at this particular moment, but that's a question I have. Therefore, I don't want my silence on this proposal to mean that I endorse the proposal as it is. I first would like to see that question addressed, it does not have to happen immediately.
This particular initiative, Dr. Stewart, is only for four-year-olds.
Right.
This particular one. That's all the grant is covering, so all 10 classrooms and the additional children...
That I know, but I saw a very elaborate plan for everything else, and so, again, it doesn't have to be answered immediately, and it certainly isn't directed at you. Dr. King has a whole team of y'all.
I'm still writing it down.
Thank you, Dr. King.
If I might also add that on that 11 million divided by 2,200, that's just direct instruction. That doesn't account for facilities, that doesn't count for its proportionate share of what it costs to generally provide the services, indirect services. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, Dr. King and Ms. Campson, do we currently have a common or standard curriculum for pre-K 3 and 4 across the division?
A common admissions standard?
Curriculum.
Oh, curriculum. There is a common curriculum for four-year-olds, and yes, there is a, both for both, the three-year-olds do now have a common curriculum, yes.
So at every location, all three- and four-year-olds are taught similarly?
They actually even have a certain way they set up the classrooms, because if you get a new class, for example, at my previous school, when we added the three-year-old class, we had had a four-year-old class in there, they actually came and changed the setup of the room to make it the same as it is everywhere.
Okay.
So it is common.
And then how do we evaluate that in terms of being qualified or effective? What's the measure of success that we are looking for?
The state of Virginia has a PALS test that we give for pre-K through first grade, and then some particular children in second and third. That's a state mandated test that does, is used in both the three- and four-year-old classes.
Okay.
Ed?
Just some points of clarity from page six on the data collection. Well, what is LEA?
Local Education Agency.
Okay. So it's our responsibility to collect this data that is here.
Whenever we get a grant, they always want to make sure that we spend our money correctly and wisely.
Right. And so they will give you, they're giving you these, will they be giving you the vehicles by which you will collect this data, or we are presenting to them?
Yes, no, they're going to tell us how to collect it, and they're going to pay for the collection. It's all, everything with this program is fully funded.
Okay, all right, so they'll be paying for it. Right, and just from my understanding, this is funding for families who are 200 percent below poverty.
Yes, sir.
Yes. And so how does that compare to families on free and reduced lunch, for instance? Is that similar in terms of the comparison of due to a poverty and that kind of thing? In other words, would most families who are free and reduced lunch also qualify for this program?
Yes. If they were free and reduced lunch, they would qualify for this.
Okay, just because of that, yes?
Not just because of that, there's other criteria, and I'm going to let Dr. Sivigni answer that particular question for you.
There are six criteria that the state of Virginia provides for us to utilize when we are screen children for preschool, for kindergarten, and those two are indicators including the free and reduced lunch indicator, and also are five other indicators that are not necessarily tied to these kinds. They look at other factors in terms of, of individuals in the home, children incarceration, other conditions in the home, regardless of their, so there are five other factors that they look at.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this matter? Thank you very much. Of course, the other item on the master milestones is the CTE. My intended...
Please, thank you.
Was another question? Okay. The CTE High School Governance Model, that was the most recent discussion that we've had, and we've been joined at the table now by Ms. Goshen and Mr. Bishop. Superintendent will say a little bit more about it, but one of the matters that needed to be discussed and decided early on in this process, this very exciting process, I might add, for the prospect of CTE High School, was the determination of the governance model. So we've had a good bit of work that has been done on that, both with public and private partners, and some good discussions in two-by-twos just over the last few days. So we're here to get a little bit more information on that to engage in our discussion, any more questions or thoughts, ideas that the board may have about the potential model. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board, CTE High School Governance Model will be presented by Ms. Goshen along with Mr. Barry Bishop, and of course, we are looking forward to ongoing dialogue and input around current planning and a status report in terms of where we are at this point and implications for moving forward. Ms. Goshen?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for this opportunity to come forward and update what we all is part of a very exciting education center as we reimagine education, oh hardly doing what we did in Northridge, showing our students a positive career, ready, but also have a myriad of options and opportunities for them to go into once they finish high school. With this, then, we are particularly with the CTE High School Project with the same strong mission as before, and that is to create a world-class academic technical high school model at the well-renowned Worcester Technical High School in Massachusetts. We are continuing with a very strong mission developed by various parties of to educate students both technically and academically for success in the global economy of the 21st century. Before U became about 1,800, it doesn't seem that long a time to travel quickly when you have a car. We had an opportunity to bring before U the feasibility study.
Since that time, we've had a lot of work being done with many different parties in the community, local government, we even had some state government involvement, business community, internal and external educators, you name it, we've really had a lot of individuals come together. Just to give a brief background, we are still going with the same model of the four academic academies, it's actually five would be, one, the ninth-grade academic academy, we have the Business and Information Technology Academy, we have the Tech, Trades and Industrial Technology Academy, Health and Medical Sciences Governors Academy, which is proposed, and the Governors STEM Academy that is proposed. We're looking at those academies simply because we did various research on the trends of the best and high-demand, high-quality jobs of the future, and we want to make sure that we're preparing our students for nothing but the best. Coupled with those high excellence CTE, a strong, rigorous academics, that means core academics leading up to, but not limited to, possibly dual enrollment, advanced placement, honors. You have internships, which we call work-based learning. We also have a variety of things going on where we're working with local two- and four-year universities, trying to figure out how do we get our students to begin and possibly end two-year degrees while still in high school, you name it. We really want to make sure that we're innovative in our terms of thinking and educating children. In addition to the ninth through 12th grade of approximately 1,400 to 1,600 students, as you know, we looked at new construction that was approved previously by the board, but we also want this building to be what we also coined jokingly as a 24-hour facility. We want it to not only satisfy the needs of Norfolk Public School students, but of the city and the residents as a whole. There will also be their extracurricular activities, students will not miss out on anything, but in the evenings, the building will become an adult learning workforce development center in terms of meeting needs of residents 18 years of older. That is very, very important because not only do we educate nine through 12, we are also going beyond educating or possibly reeducating the adults. With that set up, I'm going to turn it over to our colleague Barry Bishop, and he will continue with some of the work that we have done.
I know I'm preaching to the choir, but just to maybe remind folks and provide a little bit of context, and for the benefit of those that perhaps haven't been a part of the conversations over the past couple of years, and I know many of you, if not all of you, are aware of this, but to speak to what Canetta said, this is really about preparing our young people for high-quality, high-demand jobs, and that's the one thing we hear more often than anything else in the private sector. And it's, you know, it's frustrating. Here we are, five years after the end of the Great Recession, and there are so many high school graduates, and for that matter, college graduates, that are not able to find a job because they simply don't have the skill sets that employers are looking for. In fact, recently, the Wall Street Journal talked about advanced manufacturing and the fact that thousands of manufacturing jobs are going unfilled across the country, simply because employers can't find qualified workers. And yet, I don't need to tell you, across the country, we've got way too many young people that are simply not engaged in education, they're not motivated, they don't have the skill sets upon graduating, if they graduate, to really gain access to these jobs. So the question that I think we're all facing in education across this country, not only here in Norfolk, is how do we engage young people in learning and motivate them to graduate on time with the skills and the knowledge they're going to need to be successful in the 21st century workforce? And that's what the full-time, high-quality career technical high school is all about, because research shows that when you really engage kids and they begin to see the relevance of what they're learning, and they begin to make that connection, they're far more motivated and far more likely to be successful. In fact, when you take, when you combine math, science, and English, and you weave those into the CTE courses, and students apply that knowledge to real-world problems, they become engaged and they perform better. President Obama was at Worcester Technical High School back in May, he was the only high school graduation that he spoke at. He described Worcester Technical in this way. Worcester Technical is a model for maintaining American competitiveness in a global economy, evidence that it's not your grandfather's vocational school. 82 percent, 82 percent of Worcester's 2014 graduating class planned to attend a two- or a four-year college. This is all about being college and career-ready. And I think it's fair to say, in former times, vocational high schools were often dumping grounds for low achievers, but today, in places like Worcester, and in places like here in Norfolk, Virginia, they're going to be launching pads into the middle class.
And when we talk about launching into the middle class, we're really talking about getting a lot of work done so we can make this happen. It's one thing to speak of it, it's another thing to do it. And to get this done, it requires the partnership on behalf of all individuals involved, not just the school division, but as I mentioned earlier, higher institutions of learning, the city, community organizations, philanthropic organizations, businesses, you name it. And to help us keep moving this work forward, we'd have an opportunity to go back and revisit the initial feasibility study for refinement purposes. The best thing, we want to ensure that the instructional programming and operations of the building and the facility itself meets the needs of our children because they deserve the best, and that's what we intend on moving forward with. And in doing so, we had an opportunity to bring over 50 representatives from different businesses back into a meeting with the architect to talk about, do we have what's needed included in this building? They had a chance to look at every square inch of the building, all of the programming, to give input, because that's what it's all about. You can't educate kids in a high degree in a vacuum. We brought in educators as well as business individuals. In doing so, we're expecting to come out with a rendition of the building where all can see, so they have a better idea of what we're doing. Also, in terms of instructional, we're still meeting with various educators within our division and outside to ensure that what is included on the academic and the CTE side is what's needed and what's best for students from today and beyond. We're also looking at governance models, as mentioned. In order to lift up a project of this magnitude, it will take commitment and championship from a lot of different individuals. And in doing so, the governance model is one thing that's important, ensuring that you have the right individuals at the table who have the passion, the know-how, and the wherewithal to get it done. The governance model has to be a group of individuals, representatives from all parties that come together to ensure compliance and strategic direction that meets the vision and the mission. That can be representatives from the local government, it will definitely be representation from our school board who appoint individuals, philanthropic individuals, you name it, as well as parents and students. It has to be a team effort. The lead education agencies, some say LEA as Local Education Agency, or Lead Education Agency, is still the Norfolk Public School Board, but we work closely together with the governing board of this particular school to get the work done, because it will require all hands on deck at all time, most importantly, ownership being taken by all, accountability being taken by all, and rolling up your sleeves and getting the work done that needs to be done. Now, you say, well, you've said a lot in a short period of time, but I want to give you the information you need and open it for the questions that we have. This is a project that has the commitment of a lot of individuals. We have a lot of individuals who truly committed to champion this like no other. It has the opportunity to be one of its kind, as you know, in the city, but also in the state. The last time we asked about a school of this nature, we were sent to a different state. Well, guess what? We want someone else to ask about a school of this nature, and we want them to tell everyone to come to the city of Norfolk. So with that said, I'm going to keep my mouth closed and open it up to someone else who would like to ask questions, and please jump in, and thank you so much again for the opportunity. I don't know if my colleague has something to add.
All right, thank you very much. Well said. Warren, you...
Serendipitously, I had the honor on Monday of visiting both with Senators Kane and former Governor Kane, and Senators Warner, former Governor Warner, and both emphasized their interest in this topic without knowledge that you were going to resurrect, sorry for the pun, resurrect this CTE conversation at this time, which I think is a cornerstone of reimagining Norfolk in many ways. I was very excited that they mentioned it. What I'm interested in is as we re-emphasize this with Senator Kane saying, this is his baby, this is what he wants, and with the governor emphasizing this, we have a very important window of opportunity in the next short while. I really want the public, everyone, to understand and support those five areas, and from our conversation earlier that we had together, the flexibility to have programmatic evolution in a lot of areas is critical, and I think that is very important. But I want the public to understand not only what's going to happen, but if there is any model evolution that's been going on, if there's any ways that we're slightly modifying to reach that goal, I would like the public to understand all of that. So I think it's going to take, I think it's important to embark upon a plan now that we have both senators saying they want this to happen, a governor saying it wants it to happen, and we still want this to happen. I think the time is ready to happen now, and I'm glad that you've resurrected this conversation.
Yes, Rodney?
So I don't have so much of questions. We had the two-by-twos and got some briefing, but I just wanted to share with the board, because I didn't know if we're going to talk about it or not, just some of the things that I shared in the meeting that I had. So I wanted to think it's important, and maybe for the presentation stuff, we can just describe, they were talking about a public charter school that's, in my mind, similar to kind of how they did the Virginia Beach Green Run Academy with the school system and the collaboration, working together. But, so in response to that, part of my input back... But so in response to that, part of my input back to the team was, in the governing structure, I had so many slots for schools, so many slots from city council, I think it was one from the Greater Norfolk Corporation, one from the Community Foundation. I had recommended that they consider having a greater business and industry presence on the governing team. Since we're talking about this being employer-driven, you know, I just feel like having employers at the table at the very beginning would be a very good signal for us to consider to send. And then in the relationship between the school system and the charter, whatever gets spelled out in the charter agreement is where as the school board, we would try to make sure any things that concerns or accountability, whatever the issues may come up, try to put that in the charter agreement, but not necessarily have the management team being dominated by government appointees, but have it be dominated by the private sector. Also, shared my thoughts around Camp Estella and Camp Estella STEM, that because of the great successes that they were already having with bringing in industry partners, that to the extent that we could leverage those partnerships to support the curriculum and some of the activities that we're doing at Camp Estella, that it would be a way to leverage those partnerships and also position Camp Estella, I know they're working on the name, but whatever the name ends up being, the Great STEM School at Camp Estella, that if you attend Camp Estella at a, as part of the K eight or pre-K eight, whichever it is, that you would be prepared in such a way that it would give you almost an advantage or at least a jumpstart for continuation at the CTE school. Because from an early age, you would have been exposed to all the engineering and other opportunities that we're talking about at the CTE school. So as a pipeline, you know, I suggest that we really look at this as an opportunity to maybe do two things, program the CTE and also program Camp Estella as a leverage. Of course, we've talked about if we're bringing the new CTE school online, then that's going to have impact to our high school redistricting. So I think it's very important at some point in time, we begin to talk about what that impact will look like as a board and as a district. And then the last thing is, I brought up the Booker T still as a point of consideration, but I see Mr. Richters here, so maybe when we get to the next session, I might come back and touch on that. But just, I just happened to go back and find the feasibility study, and I know that Lake Taylor was a few points more likely than Booker T. But I do think it might be worth still talking about that, which maybe we'll get opportunity to do in the next presentation. So I just wanted to share with the board what my comments were. I don't know what other thoughts others had. Then the last thing I just wanted to mention, prior to the meeting, I had two or three citizens called me and they were asking me whether or not they should watch the work session or come to the work session. And I said to them, oh, the CTE presentation is going to be there, so I think you definitely want to hear that. But we don't have any of the information on board docs. So I don't know if after the presentation or sometime, we can have some type of public information, because I think they'll be excited about what we received in our two-by-twos. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
So thanks for bringing that up. I just had my meeting a little bit earlier, and I agree with the ability to use the CTE High School as a pipeline for those students that are going to be attending Camp Estella and the K eight program. And it will be good incentive for us to ensure that that program is all that we're dreaming it to be. The other item that I brought up was that we have lots of facilities that are in need of repair, and we have lots of educational needs right now at the present that need addressing. And I don't want the community to have the perception that we are ignoring those items or putting them on the back burner, so to speak, in lieu of this new and great CTE High School because we need the CTE High School. And as Ms. Goshen and Mr. Bishop have said, we have many figures in alignment of support with this school. And why not take the opportunity while we can for funding, for support, for governmental leadership, and promises to help realize this dream to come to fruition? So I don't want us to have the appearance that we are not giving all due attention needed to those other buildings and facilities that need a lot of attention still.
So thank you for the presentation. Excellent. And then the one thing I'd like to piggyback on to what Mr. Jordan mentioned was, I think it's important that we do educate the community on the enormous value this brings, not only to Norfolk, but to the region and to the larger Commonwealth. And I know all of us have been in presentations of late at the state level where they can't talk enough about workforce development and the gap of having enough folks that are skilled to fill the job vacancies, especially in Northern Virginia. And I know we have them here in our region as well. So I know that it's key that, to Dr. Stewart's point, there are people from high, on high, and everywhere else that are very interested in making sure we have enough of our own to fill those jobs, whether they're college or career-ready. So I don't think we can even speak enough about that. But I do think we do need to really get the community more informed, engaged, and educated about this so that they can really get behind this. I think they'll fully support it, but what is it they need to support? And when do they need to support it and how? So it's almost like we need a plan of how we help the community understand this. That's one thing. And then separately, what I would suggest is, as a board, I think we need to help you all, or you need to help us, figure out what are the steps that we need to take to help you continue with this process? And what's the timing associated with that? Because I think you're going to feel, obviously, that there's enormous support for this. Where are all the pieces and where do they need to go? And then just my last point is, and you can address all three kind of together, this does have kind of ripple effects. Should this go to the Lake Taylor campus? Should we move NTC? You talked about the remaining four high schools, and then you have, are we moving Madison to another location? So there's a lot within the division that we need to start mapping out, and I'd rather do that sooner than later, Dr. King, so that we can, along with the educational plan with Jean Richter and with our transformation initiative, how does this all tie together into one big picture and we're not looking at this in isolation?
Just, I couldn't agree more with you. To make this a reality is going to require heavy lifting on the part of government, the private sector, the philanthropic community. And you know, at the end of the day, when we describe government, that's us. That's the citizens of this city. So it is incredibly important that citizens understand what an opportunity we're talking about here. And when you stop to think of it, at the end of the day, what would our city be like when every young person in Norfolk has a dream and a plan, is engaged in education, ready for high demand, high-skill jobs, our city with a capable, ready workforce? And what would that mean to our city, our citizens in all of our neighborhoods? And that's the message we need to deliver and talk with our citizens about. Couldn't agree more.
And keeping in mind what you said exactly, having a plan to get the information out that's clear, compelling, and consistent to all constituents involved, whether they have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, whether they're an alum, you have to make sure you're engaging everyone because, like you said, it requires the commitment of all individuals involved. Everyone comes to the table with great value, whether you're a high school student, middle or elementary, because if you think about it, this building is really for that pre-K through eight right now, because by the time we get everything on board, those high schools, current high school students will be out. So there will definitely be a revisit of meetings. Some time ago, when we first started this process, we had a chance to go around to different civic organizations and get that information out, and the plan is to return to PTA, civic organizations, you name it, we have to be there. It's not just notifying business community, it's the entire community as a whole, because this is one thing. Also going out and educating internal stakeholders, because we want to rest assured that it is a college and career readiness facility that's for everyone. There's no exclusionary basis, it's inclusionary. We are not replacing or sacrificing anything at any other school. And I think it's great what you said, to ensure that everyone sees, it's not a competition, it's a compliment. When this facility succeeds, the entire division succeeds. And we cannot start working on that, the success of tomorrow is based on what we did yesterday. So we really have a lot of work to do, and I thank you for the support because it has really been tremendous.
And to Rodney's point, we've got to plant those seeds much earlier. We start elementary school and middle school. One of the things that we heard at the revisit, when we were meeting with industry, is how important STEM is to all of these disciplines. I mean, the folks working in advanced manufacturing today need to have skill sets that goodness only knows we didn't need to have, you know, twenty years ago. So STEM is more important than it ever was.
And creating that pipeline makes the difference. And it's not just creating a pipeline for one specific school. You're educating students so they have choice because we have outstanding specialty programs throughout the city. This one is just going to make us even be even better.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to speak to that in just a moment.
And I just, a couple other things. Ms. Goshen mentioned extracurricular, and that includes sports teams?
Yes.
Okay. And then with the finance goal that we would be working towards, that's including the physical, the construction, the build-out, the personnel? Remind me again what the, I guess, the eighty million or the target number, what that really entails?
Right now, we're in the process of having the architects to refine that and give us a more detailed cost. That seventy-nine point one million for new construction at the Lake Taylor High School site was for two thousand and thirteen, understanding there's a two to three percent escalation. And I'm no architect, but I've had a chance to learn a little bit or something. And however, taking that in mind, we understand that we have a division to run, and so all things can't go into all buildings. And that's why we have the community coming back in to take a look at the building. But that's the physical plant. We're working with the business community to see if the donations, contributions, and trustments of that nature can help us with the, excuse me, the equipment that goes into the facility. We do not plan, and I hope I'm saying it on camera, and we do not plan of going up. There is no option of going up and asking for more. We're really trying to work to make this building be as cost-efficient as possible and do the best that we need to do for children.
So then the ideal is, and looking at Dr. Robinson, because I've spent a lot of time on this, I guess the idea is that the, this would be part of the school board and city's capital program in part for funding construction. And then the partnership is more focused on the build-out and other pieces? Is that correct or is that not correct? Or is that to be determined?
Well, I don't, you know, I don't think any of this is written in stone yet, but clearly there's going to be a heavy lift from the government sector, i.e. the city, the citizens. One would hope that perhaps we can encourage the state to be a partner, but that, you know, time will tell on that. Certainly, we're going to be looking to some extent to the philanthropic community to help us with that lift. I think in particular, when it comes to the business, the private sector, we're really going to be focusing on, help us to equip this building. Because that's something we just don't, is it fair to say, I keep using the term "we" with Norfolk Public Schools, but we just don't have it in our budgets to do that. And one of the things that really impressed us upon our visit to Worcester is those kids are training on the latest, most up-to-date equipment so that when they leave that building, there's a seamless transfer right into a job. They've got the certificate and the skill sets that they need.
And I was, sorry, and I was just asking because as we continue to talk about the master milestones, if that's something that we should be planning in terms of our renovation and school construction? I just wanted to understand that.
And I think as part of our community education, it's also education to our business partners now, early on, just what we might later be asking, not just for equipment, but for donations. And so the earlier we engage, I would say, industry, even above and beyond what you all have done to get us where we are so far, which is tremendous, I don't think we can engage any earlier. We can't engage early enough.
We really need to turn it up.
Right. And so, you know, we've been talking about CTE, but I haven't necessarily felt like I've had the liberty to say, okay, let's go sit down in front of CEO Joe, or CEO Sam, or CEO Betty, and ask if, you know, you will support this, because it's not been tangible enough to be able to say, this is the ROI potentially to you. So if we can get to the point where I can...
Well, we're ready to sit down with Betty, Joe, or whoever, whoever we make up meeting with, we'll be there.
But I think what they're going to want to know, though, is what is the picture? What's the, what's the ROI?
That's why we're, that revisit on the feasibility study is...
Makes it more tangible.
And not only that, in the spirit of total transparency and candor, the governance model plays a major role in this funding factor.
Sure.
And so when we talk about a timeline, some things, of course, will be done consecutively, other things have to be done concurrently. And a major part of this is determining the governance model, becoming very clear on it. So at some point, when we talk about a timeline, the school board will have to, after we've done the necessary vetting and communications with the community and whatever else we need to do, will have to at least agree in principle at some point on this matter, so that the formal charter can be developed and we can communicate with clarity to potential partners and donors and supporters, the various businesses and organizations, and they will see very clearly the model. And at the same time, we've clearly costed out what it's going to look like in terms of the building itself, the equipment, and all that would be necessary for a twenty-first century first-class program over there. But this governance model piece of it, I think we need to be really clear about that, is an important piece that we're going to have to really agree upon to be able to finalize the picture of the model for those folks that we're going to go after big bucks from. I think that's a part of this reality. Yes, Orin and then Brad.
I'll follow. No, I'll follow you. Okay. When we were, over the last several months, we've been talking about seventeen master milestones, things that the school boards had voted on and supported over the past six or seven years. The first one was CTE. And before the holidays, before the Christmas season, I said, I'm just waiting for Santa Claus to help explain what CTE is in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. You're beginning to do that. I think we can't move quicker enough to make sure we all understand what the two thousand and fifteen version of CTE is. And then we, once we understand the what of it all, then we can move to talk about the how, which is the governance model and whatever. But first, I think we've got to quickly move towards making sure everyone understands the what, that understands the port of, and that starts with us. And then we can move to the how, the governance model and whatever. But Santa Claus came to town, it was y'all.
Thank you.
She is wearing red today.
I know it.
I think from the school board standpoint, if we understand and support the concept of the CTE, I think we should move forward on selecting a governance model because I think that will help guide the process in moving the whole project forward. Because if we can describe what our governance model is, while we are determining the final or the updated version of the academic portion, curricular portion of the project, then we can go out to the community and especially the business community and make an argument for support of this endeavor. So I would hope that we would all become familiar with what's being proposed and get behind it as quickly as possible.
So along with that, I would ask then, if there are additional questions, concerns, or interests relative to the governance model, that we would make sure we get those questions answered, that we would also quickly determine what kind of conversation we want to begin to have with the community before we feel comfortable solidifying the model, so that we can set this timeline. That is the next step in my mind, is that we have a clearly defined timeline. I know, as Ms. Goshen mentioned early on, that it's been about eighteen months since we were really having constant conversations about this. And a part of the discussion back then, and I know Ms. Mather has started working on it along with the team, was a communications plan.
Yes, it is.
And I think we had one or two community meetings, I believe, relative to it at that time. So we need to come back to that. So we need a communications plan, but we need a clear, clearly defined timeline that the school board embraces and endorses. Of course, it will come out of the committee that's working on it, and we all agree upon the timeline and what has to be accomplished. And I know some things we'll be doing concurrently, other... And I know some things we'll be doing concurrently, other things will require something else to be done before you can get to that next step. But once we lay that out, and perhaps by next work session, I'm not sure, we could have that done, but the timeline worked out. So we all see exactly what has to happen, who's responsible for what, and we can keep this project moving forward.
Whereas I agree with what Dr. Robinson said.
Mm-hmm.
I really want all of us to hear it together about the what CTE is in 2015. And then I can turn immediately, minutes later, to the governance model. But I want to be able to describe how the governance model helps accomplish the what. And I think that case could be made when it's time. But I don't want, I don't think we can assign just 15 minutes to this. This may be in need of a special meeting. But again, if the public can see this at the same time we're seeing this, first, I want to know about the what. But second, I could 10 minutes later start talking about the how we're going to do it.
Okay.
But I want to get clear on the what we're dealing with first.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll work on getting the what on the agenda.
For March 4.
Maybe one of those special lovely meetings.
Well, we meet about every week now, so we could do that anytime now, Dr. Stewart.
Biweekly.
We could.
Okay. We have one more item under master milestones planning. Dr. King?
Yes, the next item centers on extended learning time to include summer school implications and possibilities, extended day, year, et cetera, and wanted to give an update in terms of where we are. Ms. Campson?
Dr. Easton, that was the school board. Dr. King. Good afternoon again. At our last board meeting, board work session, the board discussed the pre-kindergarten, I'm sorry, pre-Labor Day waiver. We looked at two options. The first option was the opening in September 2015. The board at that time revised its request to look at a pilot school rather than asking for the whole district. And I'll get back to that in a moment. That'll be the focus, because this will be the focus of our extended day discussion this afternoon. Option two was to go ahead and do the application for the opening 2016 for the entire district. Conversation with the State Department, the feedback was not to present the 2016, 2017 requests now because they will be focusing on 2015. And so we're now focused, so today we're going to focus on the option, and that's something for the board to discuss, but I'm making that information available to you. So we're going to look at the pilot school option, which was option one, which would be for the September, Labor Day, the September 2015. So, and this is in your board docs, the draft, but I wanted to just give you a brief overview. We're looking at applying under two types of conditions. The alternative to the standard school day and school year, which would mean that we would be opening instead of after Labor Day, we'll be opening two weeks earlier, which would be August 17, 2015. The second type that we're looking at is the innovative program, and the innovative program is called the balanced calendar.
Excuse me, you mentioned, we don't have it on board docs, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had it in my packet. I apologize. I thought it was submitted for board docs. Janelle? No? Could I perhaps? May I get this copied for them? Can we do that?
Yes, we can get a copy.
Okay. And I apologize, when I had my packet, it was already in there. Thank you. All right. I'll give you the overview while you're waiting, and please accept my apologies for that oversight.
Thanks, all men.
Okay. So the balanced calendar, and it's innovative, we have other districts that have gotten pre-Labor Day waiver, but we needed to have something that was innovative. There are a lot of best practices that we should already be doing. And so this is 180 days of school, which is the regular. And what makes it innovative is our 10 intercession days, one week, five days to be offered in October, and the other week, five days to be offered in February. And these days are put into the calendar to allow additional and deeper instruction beyond the traditional school calendar, so that we have the two weeks at the beginning, and then we have the intercession days, which gives us really deep, focused, extra instruction. And what this does is creates more time for our children to learn all of the content, all of the instruction that they need to do before the SOL test, which is the yardstick by which their instruction is measured, and their mastery of that instruction. So that's how we get the innovative piece. And that's kind of the key that we wrap our application waiver around, because you have to have something that's not just, we just don't want it, we'd like to do it because we think it's a good idea. Well, we know, all the research is telling us that the additional instructional time is very important for our low-income children, because they come to us with so many challenges already. They need a lot of extra time and a lot of extra attention. So the balanced calendar gives them an early start, an extra two weeks more than everyone else has to prepare for the testing, and the most important thing, to increase their own learning and their proficiency levels. And then the intercessions gives them time for all that extra focus attention. So that's basically what we're going to wrap this around. We needed to identify the school for this, and the discussion was that certainly would focus on one of our priority schools. Because if we're saying we need more time for low-income children and the schools that are struggling, one of those would be best. And so the school that we're looking at is Jay Cox Elementary School. And at this time, Dr. Williford was in discussions with his priority principals to help make the selection of why this school would be a good school to start with. Dr. Williford, could you maybe share just a couple of little thoughts about that discussion you had with Mr. Cumberbatch Smith?
Yes, I've been engaged in conversations with Dr., Mr. Cumberbatch Smith, the instructional leader at Jay Cox. And at Jay Cox, we have a school that's in the second year of priority as well. And so with it being a priority school, there are requirements for extending learning time. And so we, after discussing, having a discussion with Dr. Cumberbatch Smith, he had already began brainstorming ways to extend the learning time under the calendar that we have, and having conversations with his leadership team about that. So it was very timely for the discussion. He was in full support of exploring additional ways to extend the learning time for his students so that we can gain traction in terms of increasing student achievement there. So it was a very good conversation. Additionally, with the school being a second-year priority, it's also a school that's in the third year of denial. And so with it being in the third year, I'm sorry, third-year warned, pardon me, pardon me. But it's just a third-year warned school. And so that has implications if we do not meet the benchmark across content areas this year, then that has implications in terms of applying for a conditional accreditation. Because we anticipate that the school will make rapid growth this year, will make gains. Ideally, we anticipate the school, we would love for the school to be fully accredited. But we also know where we are right now. So if we were to come up short, and we had to apply for a conditional accreditation, then this would align to innovative practice for applying for a conditional accreditation in addition to the other practices that we have in terms of support for the school. So very good conversations. Dr. Cumberbatch Smith, like I said, has had conversations with his leadership team, and they seem eager to move forward with it at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Williford. I also talked to the principal there, and he's very, very excited about the idea, which is an important key to having it be a successful program. So we really feel that Jay Cox Elementary School is the perfect choice, and one of the reasons, as Dr. Williford said, is they are third-year warned, and certainly a school that needs and qualifies, and that all the research that we have on extended learning time and the impact for disadvantaged children, this school is like the model school for that. The very children that all that research surrounds. So definitely, I think, a very strong choice. So we're hoping with the balanced learning, the balanced year time, balanced calendar, sorry, the balanced calendar and our strong argument for this school and the needs of this school, and our innovative program of the intercessions, that we have a strong waiver application.
And just to echo that, of course, the additional time is of importance to us. It gives us, in my view, an advantage to begin with the pilot, to take a look at what we are recommending. However, solely extending the time is not individually the answer. It's what we do with the additional time that's important. And so by the proposal, in terms of being able to bring forward potentially two intercessions, it will allow us to look at differentiating and bringing back students that need additional intervention, a safety net, that in terms of not mastering the standards, the elements of the standard. In addition, it allows us to consider additional support and intervention for those students that did master in their own exceeding range. So safety nets and enrichment would be important for us. The time is important, prior to summatives, but again, it's what we are proposing in terms of plans to meet the needs of those students based on a customized approach with that.
Questions, ma'am?
Is this the end of the presentation on time?
Yes.
So am I correct in saying the pilot that you're looking at is Jay Cox?
Yes.
And am I correct to say that there's no other conversation about additional learning time to be talked about now?
Yes. The focus today was on the pre-Labor Day waiver because we felt there would be a lot of questions about it.
I got a lengthy statement there. It was a line from a movie called Show Me the Money. Show Me the Time is what I was interested in. In my four years on this board, I've had hope. Seven years ago, as I paid attention, poverty got worse, people got poorer, and it got difficult for poor children to learn. For at least four years, I've seen state leaders abdicate responsibility to fund local education. Fortunately, the city of Norfolk came to our rescue. For three years, I've expected more time for students, which educational researchers said for my 40 years, which the turnaround principals have said we need. For two years, I've been waiting for the deferral of additional learning time. And by that, I'm not just talking about starting school a week or two early. I'm talking about after school, more minutes in school, which Virginia Beach has done. Across the state, there is a myriad of ways that people have added time to reach learning. Saturday school, summer schools, extra minutes. Right now, I hear none of those things. Flipping starting times, as Fairfax Pilot of the Year study and Virginia Beach has gone to. All of these things are not included in this presentation. It goes without saying, I'm beyond sad. Because of that, remember, in my profession, educational profession, we've known more time is needed. For four years, I've been hoping to hear about more time. So forecasting our future conversations, I will not support a budget for approval to the city that does not include more time, either after school, more school in time, Saturday school, summer school, some more time in some way. Starting school pre-Labor Day is but one way. Show me the time.
Courtney.
Thanks. So just to recap, when we had the first discussion regarding extended time, we were considering as a division applying for all schools for 15, 16. And then, right?
When we originally had the discussion-
Well, and I'm just talking about most recently, in terms of when we suggested to Dr. King that the division applied for waiver, after we had a good discussion with our legislators and support of, and so on. And then we took a vote as a board two weeks ago or whenever, that basically put together an approach that we would do pilot 15, 16, but apply 16, 17 for division. My question is, why are we kind of allowing the Board of Education to determine when we submit our 16, 17 application? That's one question. And are we also concerned? Well, let me let you answer that one, because I have a question about even the Jay Cox 15, 16, because one of your concerns, the division's concerns, was, are we going to have enough time to do that? And will we get the community input? And will there be enough community awareness? And will the teachers be prepared? And so on and so forth. And if we don't hear from the Board of Education for another one to four months after our application is vetted, are we still facing that same concern? So will we really achieve additional time this year as we so desired, either pilot or for full? So I guess those are really my two large questions.
Okay, just one, okay. Well, the State Department's recommendation was that we not submit it because they're focusing on this application set up for this school year. However, I agree, perhaps they can't dictate, we could certainly go ahead and submit it if that's what the board requests for us to do. So absolutely, if that's what the board wants, we can go ahead and do that. And then have it ready to resubmit again if we need to later. I have absolutely no problem with that. And then the second part of your question was, yes, we would not do anything without a lot of community input. And we would go ahead and through the principal and his community meetings and all, he would already be talking about this, if this goes with the board, to have them ready for the possibility that, you know, he would let them know that the application was in, that this was a strong possibility, but not a definite, because we won't know what we get until the state responds to us. But he would certainly be laying all the foundation, because you're right, we could never start four months down the road without community input. It was that we had a very short time window to get this back to you so that we could beat our February 16 due date to get it off to the state. And so we needed to have a school selected, and the principal and his leadership team on board, and a principal that knows his community. Because although Mr. Cumberbatch Smith is new as the principal, he's not new to this school. As we all know, he served as an assistant principal there. So he's very familiar with the neighborhood. When he returned here, he knows the families. So he already has that relationship and would easily get started once the board made a decision today, that he's ready and up, he's up and ready to go with that, because we can't wait.
Bless you.
Points and questions? In reference to the notion of submitting the waiver for the entire school division for 16, 17, we would have to know in writing or some documented form that the state board will accept and consider that. And so we definitely can circle back to see if that is indeed the case. But at this point, the response that we have received centered on, the division needs to wait until the following year for submission for 16, 17, for the entire division. So not opposed to circling back with that to ask that question. However, the 15, 16 recommendation as a pilot, of course, considering Jay Cox centered on the items we just mentioned, and we certainly wouldn't wait to begin the conversations with the community around what this entails. If you recall, when we began the discussion on transformation, we had multiple community conversations around all of the transformation initiatives. So I don't see obstacles in moving forward with the conversation in a way that we are ensuring and assuring the stakeholders that it's dependent upon this response. So I think we can do that in that way. The last item I mentioned is for the purpose of this presentation about the waiver, it was to secure the green light to move forward with Jay Cox as the pilot. To Dr. Stewart's point on extended time, I certainly understand that. This is not meant to imply that we're not looking at extended time in other schools that are, that fit the description, that are ready with the master schedule, as if we talked about in the previous work session, because extended time certainly does take on various appearances and also aligns with the safety net funding that we provide now, where schools, based on their needs and where they are in their analysis of data currently, will be able to, you know, consider extending the day, consider modifying the current master schedule, consider the Saturday- the current master schedule, consider the Saturday school. All of those things are important to us, but this is just a phase-in recommendation that we are placing on the table at this point.
Yeah, and I think too, kind of just following up on that, Dr. King, is if we could maybe at the March meeting, let's do talk about summer school, Saturday after and so on, what the division has in mind for that even in the coming year as well as in the years to come because I know that's part of your transformation and I just don't want to lose that off the table by this waiver focus of our conversation today. So if we could continue the conversation about time at our March meeting as well.
Ms. Mark?
Parting shot. Again, I haven't given up yet till I see the budget proposal. I worked for the State Department and headed up two programs. Dr. Staples, who now heads up the State Department of Education, is a close colleague of mine. I find it amazing to think that Dr. Staples or any of his colleagues would say that we should not apply. That is preposterous to me. But finally, Dr., Ms. Camson, I love what you've done for our city and I love what you're doing, Dr. King and all the rest of you, but I'm saddened by the continued deferral of more time for our students, but I'm hopeful that it may be included in the budget proposal. Thanks for all you do.
And Dr. Stewart, there is a plan in place. I didn't present it today because I was focusing on pre-Labor Day. However, you will hear it next month.
Look forward to it.
I would love to read a question. Dr. King answered my question.
Yes, Ron.
So when we had the conversation about the motion to pursue this and, you know, and I was in some concerns about applying district-wide, you know, while at the same time all the legislation was going forward, I would just respectfully recommend to the colleague, to my colleagues that we don't ask Dr. King to circle back about 2016-2017. Normally, and he can explain it far better than I can, you know, the State Superintendent's Office, they will issue guidance to the superintendents on these matters and in the process that they should follow. And if they've already received feedback that it's best to go this route, I think we should just support that route. I would say in terms of just quickly skipping through what was shared, looks like some of this is part of the application that we saw last year when we were considering this. So it mentions a lot of the different themes, Avid and so forth. But if whatever the focus is going to be at J Cox, I think that should be the focus and not get it too much involved with other things. And then lastly, I know that the J Lark study and some of the other studies indicate that the year-round program has shown impact on specific subgroups or target groups. But I would ask that we be very cautious about branding or labeling J Cox as, you know, the low-income year-round school that needs the extra help. I mean, year-round schools help children at all different levels and I think we have to be careful if we end up branding or identifying any of the pilot schools that we work with as year-round schools that somehow only good for certain children and not good for all children. So that, and then lastly, with the intercession, when you look at the J Lark study that they, they did a final study, I think, in 2013, it came out of the Senate, the Virginia State Senate. And so intercessions are typically just part of the way that they do the phasing. So in terms of our innovation, we may have to go a little deeper in terms of really trying to make the case, especially where we are in the state, of why doing this is important for this particular district at this particular time with, I think, innovations that you all have already talked about already and really just flesh those out and not so much just focus on the intercession part because if you look at some of the other year-round programs, all of them have intercessions. We have to really be able to articulate what makes ours innovative as opposed to someone that's just getting a waiver because of weather.
I think we're just changing the term intercession because year-round schools do have those three-week intercessions. And this is really a different, so perhaps our choice of the wording, it's sometimes how you label something because now that you're saying it, you're absolutely right. When I think year-round, I do think, because in the past, you know, we've had a couple year-round schools and they were using those three-week intercessions. So I think a different labeling of the, because it's totally different, our week and October night, because it's really focused on a real deep plunge into interventions and learning. That's different. And so that's a really good point and thank you for that suggestion.
All right. Well, perhaps I shouldn't say this, but I think it may look like at times we're driving without putting on the brake. And I think what I hear the board saying is that in this matter of extended time, we could really get a good, strong, clearly defined plan and just go for it, but, you know, clearly designed, defined and really go for it. We have a lot of needs. Yeah. And, yeah, and I know, I think we take the approach oftentimes that I certainly live by personally, sometimes good, sometimes not so good, is measuring twice, cutting once. And then sometimes I end up measuring 15 times and never cutting. So anyway, whatever that's worth. I'm sorry?
Paralysis by analysis.
Yeah, that's my own confession of Kirk Houston here. So 2.02, transformation update. Dr. King? Transformation update will consist of this updated discussion of J Cox and Lindenwood, of course, which is a good segue from what we just talked about. And it will be followed by educational planning update in the connection with the Young Richter Study to be presented by Mr. Tracy Richter. We'll begin with Dr. Williford.
Good afternoon, Eric Houston, members of the board, Dr. King.
Good afternoon.
I'm going to spend a great deal of time on the reconfiguration. We've had previous updates from reconfigured schools, our four parent schools of popular halls in Fairlawn, and we've also talked extensively about PB Young and Tidewater Park. We also had two other pairings that were part of the transformation initiative, which included J Cox and Lindenwood Elementarys. And we did not reconfigure those schools at the end of last, at last school year, but we did say that we would study and continue to monitor student achievement and other variables in those other schools in the effort to make an informed decision on whether or not reconfiguration would be feasible for J Cox and Lindenwood. And so we've had some, we've had different approaches to ensuring that those school communities were ready for reconfiguration. And so wanted to just talk about that for a second. We've used a three-pronged approach this year, looking at administrative readiness, staffing, community readiness, and ultimately the facility readiness to determine if those schools were ready for reconfiguration for next school year. Under the administrative readiness, we focused on leadership and student academic progress. In terms of leadership, at J Cox, we have a new principal there. And at Lindenwood, you could consider we have a new principal there as well, new to that community. She's only been there, this is her second year. In both schools, we've seen extreme change in culture, climate and culture, and we measured that by evidence of student behavior, decreases in student behavior and student engagement. We also looked at academic progress. And in both schools, we've seen progress from one year to the next, but specifically at Lindenwood, where we saw progress across all content areas. We've continued to follow student academic progress at J Cox and Lindenwood this year and we continue to see progress on affirmative assessments. We're seeing growth with their student populations. We also considered staffing, community input, and so we've engaged in conversations with the principals at both schools in terms of their staff readiness to go through reconfiguration, which would require gaining new staff, staff moving from one school to the other, perhaps transfers, in a time where, again, we're trying to build upon the successes that the schools are showing thus far. Principals expressed a need to, or need, a desire, or want to continue to build relationships with their, with their current staff and connection in terms of building more parent engagement in the community. And last, but certainly not least, we looked at facilities readiness for reconfiguration. And the truth is, we have two schools with two different size enrollments. J Cox has an enrollment of over 700 students and Lindenwood has an enrollment of close to 400 students. So ultimately, that posed some concerns in terms of being able to reconfigure. And so with all of those, the conversations with the administration, staff and community, it's been recommended at this time not to reconfigure J Cox and Lindenwood Elementary Schools. However, you might want to know what will we do? We just had a extensive conversation about adjustment of the school calendar with the pre-Labor Day start. And so that's one way we would look to continue the transformation initiative. Additionally, we look at, we will continue to reform instruction utilizing other things that have been selected, STEM for J Cox and IB for Lindenwood, both of those themes being heavily based in inquiry-based instruction. And so we want to continue the professional learning there as well in terms of continuing with our transformation and focusing on the main thing. And ultimately, just to continue to build leadership and teacher capacity for change, again, through the professional learning focused on the transformation and those turnaround principles and themes which we've discussed. So at this time, I would like to just open up for any additional questions regarding the reconfiguration.
Mark?
I got your word, not. I understand. Thank you for, you lead up the department that's focusing on turnaround. I have one question. Is it not a critical turnaround principle, more time?
Yes, I think all seven turnaround principles are critical in extending more time as one.
One of them is more time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So I can certainly appreciate the approach to determining whether or not the timing is right and all factors being considered so that if indeed we were to decide to reconfigure those schools, that especially the space issue, that we will be able to accommodate whether the primary or intermediate school, all of those grades, grade levels appropriately and the other criteria that were set forth in making a determination. I really appreciate that kind of thorough analysis so that we would really, really make sure as to whether or not that was the move to make for next fall. So thank you. Any other questions regarding reconfiguration? Okay. Tracy? Yes? Tracy, I think we're ready for you.
It is great to be back. Thank you so much, Eric Houston, members of the board, Dr. King. Boy, there's a lot of moving parts, aren't there? Trying to keep up is, you know, sometimes an impossible task, but we'll do our best to do that. We have for you a handout on the, on a PowerPoint, and I'm going to point out two things on here in a little bit that I need to make a correction on. I'll make the correction for the board docs too when I get there. My goal here today is to kind of update you on where we are in the, what I've kind of dubbed as phase two of planning as we accepted some recommendations last year and start to move into kind of the implications of those recommendations and then where we need to move on from here. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the steering committee, how we've met, what we've talked about. I also want to talk to you about, I guess I can move this, oh, good, some of the projected live-in enrollment capacity numbers we're looking at this year. I'm giving you an update on where we are in the process as far as recommendations as we move into the 15-16 school year and then kind of some further dates and community engagement and how we're going to engage the community further. So hopefully we'll be, you know, as brief as I can be, but my history with you doesn't prove that very well. And so I'll jump right into it. Our steering committee, we have conducted two meetings as of date and what we have discussed with these is, with the group, is to set goals for where we want to be. And first of all, and probably foremost, is to address reaching milestones for socioeconomic diversity within the division, something that was of high talking point last year that we continue to move forward to and trying to find solutions to that. Within that, we've done some research discussion and I brought with me, and I brought just a, and it's for you if you want it or not, just a bibliography of some of the research that we've given to the steering committee on choice-type programs around the country, what it's done. And so I've got 10 copies for you and if you can take them, they're just a bibliography for you to go research it if you feel the need to do that. Within this group also, you know, there's been a, there's been a pressing need to not just go through the motions of a facilities plan and to the core note and serious note of really making a difference and not just making it a verbal commitment. And this group has a, it's a bit smaller than last year, but it has the same representation. But the passion of this core group is something I don't get to see every day. And so I enjoy coming to see them every time I come to see them because it's not just another committee to them. And I can appreciate them taking their time to do that. We also have talked about, you know, working toward creating the 100% feeder pattern from elementary to middle. And again, with the CTE discussion coming down the road and figuring out what we have to do as far as alignment and that direct articulation of curriculum into your higher school grades, which offers challenges, obviously, when you're starting to talk from K to 12 and trying to coordinate elementary schools to high schools and how you want to do that best. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that when we get to some of these recommendations in the process. We also wanted to identify existing and newly identified recommendations for the implementation of 15-16. Now, we believe that there's probably not going to be a lot of action to take for the 15-16 school year and mostly in, due to all the moving parts of, you know, the construction of four new elementary K8 schools, looking at the CTE discussion now, obviously the pre-K discussion, you know, the recommendations that have moved forward in the past. And so, but we think there are some things that we want to talk about for next year. What they can mean on budget, maybe minimal impact, but again, that may be up to you to decide how that may impact the budget for you. So we'll get to those in a few minutes. And then obviously, the final goal is to make sure we have a constant communication with the community of Norfolk, that this is ongoing, that we believe that planning isn't an event, we believe that planning is ongoing. And, but to keep that communication open, I'm going to show you where we're going to meet with them. The next slide, I'm going to then jump right into our socioeconomic and talking about those points. On here, obviously, we use, you know that we use a lot of geographic information systems. And what this is plotting is density of students of, that fall within that poverty range that we identify. And you can see, and again, I don't believe this is any shock to people out there about where this falls in place. However, what this does is starts to give us some indications about if we're going to try to meet any sort of socioeconomic goals that get set forth. How do we do that best and where are we really having to address the issue? And again, for, you know, those of you who are involved day to day, you know this data, but a lot of times people don't understand completely where it is and where it lies. So we want to make sure that gets communicated. Not only that, to get the numbers out there... Not only that, to get the numbers out there, we're almost at 70% students in the division who are socio-economically disadvantaged. Now, again, the high-level numbers don't mean anything. And still, I start applying them in the next slide to the schools. And when I start to look at the school buildings and I start to say, okay, if I identify the average and I say that hyper-poverty is 90% and above. And I start to look across the division and I see that I go almost 2/3 of the way through your elementary schools before I even get schools that are below the division average. And this is where the challenge of trying to establish goals of socioeconomic diversity come into play. Because at 70%, how do you, or what kind of goals do you set that really makes sense across the board? You know, as I look at this, I, you know, I have to mention that I was working in a district in Indiana not too long ago that were concerned of redrawing boundary lines to get students into 13% to 15% free and reduced lunch counts. And obviously, for them, it's a big issue. And I think the challenges that we face here in Norfolk, when you're, what it seemed is maybe your least impoverished school is still at 30%, 35% free and reduced lunch count, which tells us we have a big challenge here. Now, it is things, and it's systemically, that changes poverty, and we know that. The foundations of good education that are founded in where you guys are moving towards, impacts in from STEM going all the way into career and technical advantages that your school can bring. There can't be enough emphasis on that program, on the CTE. There just can't be. Because setting those goals will only bring other schools up, and we know that. So we have to address kind of systemically, and we are doing just that within your planning, not only in the facility side, but programmatically. But how do you get this to where we need it to be? And even when I move into middle schools and I look at the middle schools and you see that only two schools fall below what we may consider the division average here. And if you recall, last year, we talked a lot about where can we start? And we believe that the start can and will begin at the middle grades. Because we think that there's opportunity for choice, that students see that more as you start to get to the secondary grade levels. And obviously, the transition from Wynona into Lakewood, now what is Lakewood, will start that, we think. You know, current numbers show that it is attracting some socioeconomic diversity. But then we have to consider what happens on the flip side. That if you attract, let's say that school goes to 50-50. Well, that's 20% below your district average, which means somebody lost the students that aren't in the high-poverty area. And so are we going to twist this around where a school loses students who are, do not fall in the category of free and reduced lunch or poverty? And then that number goes up at that school? And so you're always going to be in this balancing act as we start this, as you start a choice program at the middle grades level. And so we've got to be aware of this. And so part of the recommendations process that we're going to talk about is, okay, if we're going to go this choice route and it becomes, and we see success in it, which I see nothing but that for Lakewood in the initial planning of this thing, that we're going to have to pay attention to what it's going to mean division-wide and what the balance is between choice, neighborhood, comprehensive, just go down the list. And so when I hear those initial numbers coming in below that 70% or even at that 60%, my initial question to Dr. King was, okay, what's that mean? And so I'm starting to, one of the pieces to this puzzle is going to see, when we get that application count and we start to see what those numbers mean, what's it going to mean for us in planning and how we do that better? And so I just want us to be aware of, this is kind of an occupational hazard of mine, is that I'm always looking at step three or four beyond where you are today, so we don't get the gotcha. And again, it's not that it's a matter of concern, it's just a point that we have to pay attention to. I'm not going to really get into kind of these details, but, you know, we've done an updated capacity, looked at the capacity of buildings and utilization of facilities. Tonight, Lee, Wong, and Matt Sacks are flying in. And they're going to walk five buildings one more time, just to take a look at their capacity. We have some differences within those five buildings that we're going to, that we're just trying to narrow down. I don't think they're huge differences, but they may make an impact, especially at the middle grades level. I know there's talk out there that is there opportunity for further consolidation or reduction of square footage. And at this point, I'm going to tell you that I don't foresee that for a couple of reasons. The first reason being is that we have to establish if we're going to get to any sort of model that's going to diverse our schools socio-economically, of choice and how we're going to implement choice within the division. And there's going to be several pathways to that, and I'll show you those in a minute. But without making those kind of decisions, it would be very hard to say, what's my middle school? What's my high school? Without making those decisions first. Second of all, is we start to look at schools like, and two of the schools that we have some discrepancy on are Rosemont and Blair. And which, we may look at Rosemont to be more of a programmatic capacity building than an actual physical capacity building. And so we've got some discussion on that. And we, for some reason, we have quite a discrepancy on Blair. And that may reduce seats enough to know that a middle school, we may just have enough seats to get us to where we need to be in a nice cushion. So we don't want to make decisions to do anything further on that. As I continue down that pathway, I know people in the community or people within the, in Norfolk are going to ask about, what about those small schools? You know, what's going on with, you know, with the schools like St. Helena that are, you know, 250 students? And, but again, you guys know the baseline data is that I'm looking at total students in areas. And I would suggest, south of the river, our seats are valuable. And that even a St. Helena, the small school, has a huge domino impact to where they may go in the future. Even to a point where at, you know, Camp Estella, and you're going to see some numbers here in a minute that prove that within the neighborhood, we're just at the threshold of the seats we need for neighborhood kids without offering choice. And so we've got some decisions to make when it comes to those choice seat offerings, where the other 200 kids are going to go. And so as we start down that discussion, to be prepared when you guys have the community discussions that you have and people that walk up to you and ask you about those things, I think we have to be very cautious in saying, well, we've got to see, first of all, what our decisions programmatically are going to be and how we're going to decide to do choice. And then we can start talking about if we can do any sort of consolidation or reduction of square footage in the division. And at this point, I'm going to tell you, I don't see any. And now, that doesn't say in the future, that doesn't mean something can't happen. But I think there's going to need, there's going to need to be more capital influence on that beyond the four schools that you're currently doing. Yes, sir.
Have you taken into account the increased capacity with Camp Estella coming back online? I know you talked about that neighborhood, Lafayette, Wynona, and now the crossroads has taken up some of the middle schoolers.
Yeah, and we have, we have. Even with, because keep in mind that some of the schools, for instance, if I, even with those, offering choices within those, division-wide, our capacity, our capacity gets you about 90% at the elementary grade level for utilization, which is a very comfortable range for you, division-wide. But even the additional seats at Camp Estella, I'm going to show you numbers that say that I've got, you know, 900 or 850 kids, K-5, pre-K-5, that live in the Camp Estella boundary. And I've got 900 seats total for elementary. And 200 of those are going to be taken away from choice, which tells me I've got 700 seats for 850 neighborhood kids. Camp Estella's, and even the increase of the capacity there means that 200 kids are going to have to go somewhere else. And it's not St. Helena. And as you start to push into the core of the city, I don't have any seats here until I start to move further north. And so we've looked at that.
But you're taking 200 seats out of some of the other schools.
Yeah, but division-wide, I still have the same amount of seats. And so I'm at 90% utilization.
You've got 2,000 difference.
And so if I look, let me see my total capacity number. I don't have that added up on here.
We have a capacity of the middle schools total of 7932 without portable. And a population of 6131. So you're talking.
And I'm probably going to take off, it's my guess I'm going to take off probably 500 or 600 seats right off the top with Rosemont and.
They're included in there.
No, when we go back and redo the reevaluation of those schools.
And then you have, then you have nobody sit in Blair. And then Camp Estella's going to add 250 seats, middle school seats. I'm not following your logic, Tracy.
There's only, keep in mind, that may not be the only piece to this. The other piece for not consolidation immediately at the middle grades level is trying to figure out where you're going to be in a feeder as far as if we start to move in the direction at the elementary grade level of how we do choice to better socioeconomic diversity and then how those feed into middle grades education. And so I would be cautious right now. It's not to say that it can't happen at the middle grades level. But in the immediate, before we make any decisions on that, I'd be hesitant to make any recommendation before we knew what the consequence of the elementary would be. And so capacity may not be the issue at the middle grades level. It may just be a matter of.
I'm going to tell you it's not. Capacity is not an issue at the middle grades level. I would argue that right today. And we haven't even opened up Lafayette, Wynona, or Camp Estella.
Right, 200 seats there and then I got grades three through eight with a total population of 450, which I think is going to be a programmatic capacity there. It's not going to be a building capacity.
I think they were talking 750.
750 in the long term, probably. But, okay, so I've got six grades, I've got 200 seats there, so 400 extra seats.
Out of already, we've got 1,800. So now you're up to 2,200.
Right. And so it may not be a capacity issue at the middle grades level. It may just, let's hold off to see what the feeder issue will be and then make some decisions based on that.
Well, from, again, from a financial standpoint, we need to make those kind of tough decisions. And our feeder patterns may have to, I mean, we're looking at a $15 million deficit in our, a gap in our funding. We've got to find ways to make sure that we're spending our money as best we can.
Sure. Yeah, I don't disagree with that. And which was kind of the point of the last plan of getting Wynona offline in the first place, to start to reduce those seats. And so I think procedurally, I don't disagree with that. But if it's a, if it's a one-year decision programmatically and we think we need to go to a middle school already, then that may be something that I need to be directed to start looking at. And which is fine, we can do that. Any more questions on that? So with that.
So we have just another thing left in this segment.
That's fine. I'll get through this. On the, we have, obviously, we do migration percentages, so we do a live-attend analysis. The live-attend analysis really doesn't differ that much from last year. So we're seeing that same number. Now, again, how you move within this district or division can be anywhere from special education programs. But what we're trying to do is we're going to, on the, in the breadth of the CTE discussion, one of the things we talked about is trying to look at, as was mentioned by a couple of board members earlier, that we're going to have to look at what it means to take a boundary high school offline and then redistricting the whole division and then trying to figure out what that means. Because on paper, technically, four high schools would be overutilized with a division-wide. But division-wide, you'll have enough capacity. Does that make sense? So, okay, so we've been through that. So we had to, so we're going to look at not only doing, we're going to have to look at survey research and interest, but we're going to have to look at historical trends of why students transfer across high school boundaries, if they're in search of program or if they're in search of something else. And if we can see any sort of migration trends, maybe we can use some scientific data along with survey data to come some decisions about how we redraw the high school boundaries in the division in the long term. So that's why the migration becomes very important to us. Now, the next couple of pages, there's a lot on here, but I just want it for you to have it in your record so you can look at school by school. But I'm not going to go into detail on each of these. But what we conducted this year was a live-in enrollment projection. And a live-in enrollment projection, what we did is we geocoded all your students for the last 10 years. And we overlaid the current boundaries onto those, onto those, current, into that 10 years. And instead of doing a by-attend projection, we did it by how many students actually live in that boundary historically, and we've projected within that boundary. In the initial effort, yes?
That you are assuming are going to public education or?
These are your students only, Norfolk Public Schools.
Okay, so this does not take into consideration those who are going to private?
It does not. And again, getting private school data in the state of Virginia is not an easy process. And on top of that, we could get enrollment data, but we can't get by address technically necessarily. Because you can see a, you know, a private school downtown Norfolk can be attracting from Williamsburg or Virginia Beach or Chesapeake. I mean, there can be a lot of factors in there. So for us to even geocode those students without that kind of data, which is very difficult to come across unless it takes, you know, an act of your legislature to do it. And we don't have that, unfortunately. We have, obviously, we use census data to do some estimates on how many students you're getting in comparison to, at school-age kids you're getting that, from last census count. So we can make kind of an educated guess at the market share that we're not getting. But again, it's that at best. It's an educated guess for us.
I think that's important in our city because we do have quite a substantial amount of private school entities, both with a religious background and with a nonreligious background. And we might start to see a little bit of useful data in the high school level when a lot of our private schools don't have a high school level capacity and they are in search of those specialty programs. So what might be interesting to look at is the trends from elementary school, the numbers, and then to see if those numbers increase in high school because of the fact that we have less high school options for private school students and because of the fact that we have more coming in for IB, medical sciences, leadership program, arts program, and even the governor's school for the arts that we have.
So what we can do is we can look for unique ID numbers for students to see if they enter in that were not existent in middle grades, to see if we can. And we may, because we've even have been asking Times to do an elementary ID identification versus a high school to see if they disappeared for middle grades. Because in public education, middle schools typically, no, sometimes lose kids.
No, yes, that's where, we had a report a while back. That's what our data showed, that middle school is when.
Yeah, and you don't have the patent on that. There's a lot, for some reason.
That's common in a lot of school districts, urban school districts.
Yeah, and we see that a lot. So I think that that's important to note, what kind of, and I think, you know, for instance, Lakewood may give us an initial indication. My understanding is we're getting some homeschool applications already, we're getting some private school. So that's good news to hear. But it'll be interesting to see where that comes in at. And because, you know, typically, what we've seen in that kind of, you know, when students choose, don't choose public schools, what is their pathway of choice? You know, you do see the private parochial, financial, and obviously denominational legacy come into play. They'll look at charter, which you don't have that option here, or they look at home before public, and then they go public. And so we have to kind of look at that as a determining factor too. But I'd like to see what the Lakewood numbers show us. I think that'll be an interesting indicator for us.
Because it all goes back to, you know, Brad, you always champion the economic impact study. And if we can determine the economic impact of us attracting and retaining some of those families who are not choosing Norfolk Public Schools, it will bring in the economic diversity that we need. It will increase our ADM and the fact that, you know, I think it'll just be a better, better outcome for us to at least have some of that data to take a look at.
And again, I wish, and I wish just across the country, I could get more private school enrollment data. It'd be so much more helpful. And I think it'd be better for everybody to be able to attain that and better planning citywide, at any rate. So back to our process on the live-in. So again, what, the numbers that you see, don't be confused that these are the attendants of the buildings, because they're not. Our goal was to look at, and I always say this is worst or best-case scenario, every child decides they go back to their neighborhood school. And so if that's the case, do I have enough seats to appropriately accommodate? And obviously that doesn't happen, I mean, because we have choice programs, we have, you know, special education, we have pre-K, we have all these factors that don't allow that to happen. But what it can do is give us some initial indicators to say, okay, are we really pressing schools by their initial boundary? Do we have to do a boundary analysis to say, you know, look, maybe we can switch a boundary over to balance this better? The other thing is that if we're going to go down the pathway of looking at optional choice at the elementary grade level. And I'm not assuming that we could do it division wide, but where do we have opportunity to do it right off the bat? So if I have, you know, five hundred kids in a boundary and I have a school that has seven hundred and fifty capacity. My initial indicator says, well, why don't I look at this school for choice seats initially because I know I've got seats here? And so then not to lose sight of the transformation charter ideas that came out of last year's discussion, which I think have great foundations. And I don't think that, I believe in that. I believe that the premise of where that was going had high value educationally and I don't want to lose the value of that. And so we want to go back to that discussion initially programmatically about how we want to look at buildings in a choice system. And again, I'm going to show you just a couple pathways on that, so the live-in projection is just that. And we want to show and we're going to show you the trends on that. Now, so that's the next couple of pages so you can see at every grade level. And then I'm just going to take you, and again, I just put these in the slideshow so you could have them for reference points, but I'm going to go all the way now to. What I did then is I looked at the next five years and I looked at the trend of the live-in projection to the capacity of the building. And here's where I need to make two changes very quickly. Fair Lawn and Tidewater, I should have brought in the capacity of the other two buildings. Both those numbers should actually be seven sixty-five with the combination of the two buildings and I apologize for that error in there. And I'm going to make the correction as soon as I leave here and get it back to you. So on, so if you look here on page, well, it's the projected live-in projection and capacity. Fair Lawn, it says three sixty, it should be seven sixty-five because Fair Lawn should have, yeah, and should, they, it's a combined capacity of the two schools, of the pairings.
Capacity permanent?
It is permanent.
So you said it's supposed to be.
Seven sixty-five, which, which obviously then changes how many seats are available. So like in the first year of, in the twenty fifteen sixteen school year, I would actually see, you know, thirty-eight seats or, I'm sorry. I would see forty-two seats additional instead of minus three sixty-three. Yeah, then I go to the next page or two pages down to Tidewater and it's a, it happens to be the same number, seven sixty-five. With the, with the combining the capacity of both those buildings.
That's what you've done, excuse me, that's what you've done in your projected enrollment on page ten. Where popular halls and PB Young are not listed, you've combined those with.
I have, yeah, and we've made it one boundary.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and so.
Thanks.
So Tracy, one thing that I know several of us on the board have asked the question. And I think this will help us understand that is what is the vertical capacity of the aligned reconfigured schools? And do we have enough capacity with those children coming into K to two going to the three to five partner?
Right.
And so that's not an answer for you to give necessarily today, but as part of this exercise, that's what we need to know. Because that dictates how many mobiles or not or what kind of facility recommendations we need to make. To allow for the vertical alignment and what are the feeder children numbers coming into the K to two? And is that a balloon that needs to be squeezed into a three to five that can't, you know, accommodate? And I'm not suggesting yes or no, but.
Just give us the numbers to see what we.
Right, and what do you predict years out so that we can appropriately plan facility wise?
Sure, and in, and we will forward you, we just, and the reason we are at this point, we will forward you. This is the actual draft projection report that does it by grade two. And so even though we'll get those numbers to you, we'll pass along this report to you, we're just putting, you know, Dennis and I have been going through some final touches on it to make sure we're okay in it. To show you, it shows you by grade also, by school. And so, but we'll get you the number to narrow that down, but you'll have some reference points to those too.
Especially for those four schools, two pairings.
Okay.
Is there enough capacity vertically to accommodate what's coming into them one day and what we have today?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So as you go through there, you can see where, where we believe that there can be, you know, seats available. And again, it's just an initial indicator, it doesn't say that that's where we're going to put seats and so that's important. And so we do the same thing at, when you look at, and there's a couple of things that you need to note in here. Anything that has a star on it, I've put the new capacity on it for. And so for instance, if you look at Ocean View, I've put the seven oh seven, which is the planned capacity of the new building. If you look at Camp Estella, we've put in there, we've put in there nine twenty-two, which is the number of elementary seats and that's total. I haven't taken choice seats out of there, so that's just total elementary seats. Now, what we haven't done though is that when you start to look down at the middle schools, you have to start to think about. Okay, well, I've got a couple of exceptions in middle schools where I need to add some seats for middle school, like Camp Estella. When I start to look at schools like Crossroads, you know, Crossroads technically, because it's a K eight, doesn't have a six-eight boundary. It falls within Azalea and Norview and so I don't have a cross, I don't have a crossroad six-eight boundary. And so what you're going to see is that, well, those six-eight students actually fall within the Azalea in the Norview live-in projection. Again, there's not a lot I can do about it because I don't have a boundary for the six-eight. All I can do is I know I'm getting this many kids if I go to the live-attend analysis. I've got about a hundred and sixty that come out of Norview and I've got about, you know, eighty that come out of, out of Azalea. I know that in my, in my live-attend analysis, but I can't do a projection for just Crossroads on a live-in because I don't have a boundary for the six-eight. So again, these are just initial touch points of data for us, yeah.
Okay, let's go back to the projected live-in projection and capacity.
Sure.
Let's just start with Bayview, so Bayview, the top line that's not bolded, I, I understand that is their, that is their capacity based on their facility.
That's correct.
As of right now, and then the numbers underneath of that in bold are.
That's the difference of the capacity to the enrollment, the projected enrollment.
Difference, okay, so, okay, all right, so that's the difference. And then when you have the numbers in red.
So let's go to Granby for instance. I have, I have six hundred and fifty-three permanent capacity, my live-in projection shows me that I have seven hundred and six kids that were the K five. Or pre-K five kids that we, that we see living.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the fifty-three would be, it's fifty-three over the, what the six fifty-three is.
That's correct.
Okay, so, so the red is overcapacity. And then you said for Camp Estella, where you focus on the new, the new schools that are being built. You said that you had put in their capacity at what they're projected, their, their new enrollment is going to be, where is that?
So the new, the total capacity of that building is eleven sixty-seven. Of that, there, there's intended to have seventy-five seats in the sixth, seventh and eighth grade levels. And so you take off that two hundred and twenty-five seats off of that, you get the nine twenty-two elementary seats.
Right, okay.
And again, that's total seats, that doesn't include, I haven't taken anything off if you're assigning so many for choice.
Okay, okay, but the, the eleven sixty-seven is, so how did you do that with Larch, with Larchmont? Right.
And I might have just carried over the new one there, I have to, you know what, I have that number too, I'm sorry. Let me readjust that one. I actually just brought in from the database, it saw the ID code and just brought it over and I had to do a manual change and I missed that manual change.
So that means the, the five sixty-three actually should be.
Seven oh eight, I think.
Seven oh eight.
They're similar, other than Camp Estella, they were around the seven oh eights.
Right.
Yeah, and then I guess it would be Larchmont.
And Bowling, which is now Ocean View. So I did those and I just, the one that I didn't catch was Larchmont there. Just captures the database and I manually override.
Oh, yes, okay, so you do have that for Ocean View and you do have that for Richard Bowling, okay, great, okay, that's what I wasn't following.
Thanks for that catch, please.
For the sake of time, we're going to have to go to the recommendations.
Okay. All right, so on the recommendations, so the process update, okay, the first thing is, is we're going to revisit and revise maybe the Willoughby twenty-fourteen recommendation for next year possibly. Again, I'm not so much going to the detail yet, but we think that there's a possibility to start making an initial move to where that school needs to be. And so again, we'll get into details with that when, we haven't discussed that with the committee yet, we met this morning again with the internal team and so we have some ideas on that. We're going to revisit and revise the feeder pattern concepts from the two thousand fourteen, if you remember in that report, we did kind of an overview of what we could see. One of the things identified in the steering committee was, wow, we've got some real hyper-poverty moving into hyper-poverty, so we need to avoid that. And so we've got to revisit that and make sure that we get that better. The other thing is to review the impact of Lakewood three eight school from other division schools and we talked about that earlier. The fourth one is to analyze choice models to implement goals towards socioeconomic diversity. Now, here's the thing is that when you're looking at choice in elementary grade levels, there's all kinds of different ways you can look at it. You can look at it as a feeder base, so do we make choice and then make choice, make choice? The other is that do we do theme based? Now, traditionally at the elementary grade level, theme base becomes kind of a, it can be thin ice because if you want direct articulation. Trying to coordinate an elementary program with a high school program is about as complicated as anything you do in education. Especially when you're, when you're theming it and so you can build math programs, English programs and all that. But change of leadership, change of program, change of boards, change of superintendents, all will change that and kind of dismantle what we do. So we want to be cautious to make it just theme based. The other thing is we can do it regionally based and so I've seen examples out in the country where we create. Super boundaries, let's call them, of four or five elementary schools, offer choice within a four or five school region. That has socioeconomic diversity among those buildings and then create program to allow that to happen. Which then is that feeder discussion for middle school possibly. We want to explore that option, we want to see if there's ways to look at the city and say, look, I can combine two schools that are not in a high poverty situation. With three schools that are in high, in poverty situation. Because I think what we have found is that especially at the elementary grade level, it's never been difficult to bring students out of impoverished areas. And even, even ethnic and, and race minorities to schools of other, of non-impoverished areas. The opposite effect is difficult to do, is to try to get students that are in non-impoverished areas into impoverished areas that are still neighborhood schools. We've seen magnet programs that are full magnets work to get kids back to the inner cores, that donut hole we've talked about. But we haven't seen it very successful when we keep neighborhood schools open to get kids drawn in. And so this is the complication of this and so what we believe is that there's probably a combination of all three of those. Regionally, thematic and, and feeder based that we can create and we, and we believe it has to be a phased in process too. We don't think we can get there overnight and so there's a lot of data to work through on this to make sure we can get to these goals. Obviously then, throw in the other components that you just talked about, current technical education. Until last week, I didn't realize this was such, it got moved to the front burner again, which was great news. But we really started hearing that it's really starting to move again, so that was good news for us. That means more work down the road here for us to think about. The other thing is the pre-K, what that means to utilization of facilities, you know, how you're going to, how you're going to use those buildings. You know, pre-K kids don't sit in hallways, they sit in rooms that take space. And so we have to make sure that we're accounting for any sort of growth model with grants or whatever happens that we can do. So those are obviously other things. So the last thing with that then is then, is kind of where we go from here. We'll meet again with the steering committee and we're going to get this email out today because we were thinking about some dates. But February twenty-sixth, we'll meet back with this group, we have a tentative date for March twenty-eighth. Problem is, is we're getting into some crunch schedules as far as spring breaks and, and other program things and you guys are doing a lot of budget things I hear in the month of March and. So we're trying to work around that a little bit, so you see March twenty-eighth, that is not a mistake. We're going to put a feeler out to see if we can get the committee getter for a Saturday morning meeting. Which again, this group, I'm not, I'm pretty sure that they're being enthused about just trying to meet towards solutions, so we're going to actually just put out a feeler for that. Community meetings, locations to be determined, but will be March ninth and tenth. We're, again, we're going to do some, similar to what we did last year, try to regionally place them so we have access to those meetings. We will have together a recommendations draft by April first. Now, if there's something that has budget impact that we identified before that, we intend to bring that to you. So for instance, I don't know if our discussion around the Willoughby may have that. But if that is, we may bring that to you before the final recommendation because well, I think what we have in place may be, may be really beneficial and low impact. But may have a budget impact for you, so we may bring that before the final recommendation if that's okay. Okay, okay, and we can. Our big concern was making sure we vetted it the right way with the community as your goals are and so that was a big deal for us. To make sure we got it back to committee one time to run through the, but we think it's solid and so we want to get out there with that. Final recommendations, so what we're intended on doing is getting Dr. Savigny and Dennis, the, the draft recommendations to review. And we're going to, we have, what you're not seeing on here is all the internal meetings we've scheduled with the team. And then looking at the board meeting for April fifteenth for a final deliverable. Again, with the exception of any sort of budget impact recommendations that may come forward.
The only thing I would suggest is the April fifteenth meeting I was looking ahead is a formal business meeting. I don't know if we want to try to look at that at informal on that day or have it at informal, I know time is of the essence. I think the community hearing this conversation today being livestreamed is good. Should we pick a board meeting where we can do that again? So I think we need to consider the timing of that.
You have an April first work session.
Right.
That I know of and I'm going to hate to tell you this, I have a statewide meeting in Anchorage, Alaska on a research thing they've been doing for about six months that I have, I've had on the books for a while. And as much as I think I could make a trip all the way from Anchorage back in the day, I don't know if I can do that. So I've got one conflict there, that was my conflict. It doesn't mean the discussion can't happen with the internal team also and I apologize for my conflict on it.
Yeah, I just think we need to consider that among ourselves, this is a good conversation today, it's good for the community to hear it, so.
Do you have any questions, or?
Yes.
One of the most significant contributions that I've seen in my four years on the board is you coming to assist us. I think your data displays are excellent, I think your tenure projections are critical. I do request that you put on page ten the projected enrollments so that the community people from popular halls and PB Young don't think they've been omitted. Maybe a slash or a parentheses so they know they're there. I do like that we've clearly confirmed that two-thirds of the students in Norfolk are in socioeconomic disadvantaged situations. And I have some questions that remain from our meeting in Norview several, several months ago and goes to your recommendations and you just identified a big one, Willoughby at one twenty-nine. A middle school, the number of middle schools was, and, and you raised questions at that time over Saint Helena. So still, those three considerations, Saint Helena consideration, middle, the number of middle schools and Willoughby. But again, very grateful for all that you bring. And I know Dr. King, as he, as he has the joy of getting ready to look at redistricting and poverty targets and finally addressing that as, as what we can add to that. I think your data is going to be critical and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, so first, thank you and for all the work that you're doing and from time to time I've had the chance to sit in on some of the district team, the committee. And I think they're doing a, a great job, you all having some real good conversations. So I need you to help me, help me with some things. So when, when I look at your chart on hyper-poverty or SCS data on elementary schools. First I just want to point out to you have a couple of high schools and middle schools stuck in the chart, so I'm not sure what, what that is. But if you, when I look at your chart on social, SES status. And I look at charts that the staff has done before on, on time graduation rates. Depending upon the elementary school where you start. school where you start, it's almost the exact same chart. The higher the poverty, the higher number of cohorts who do not graduate with their class. So, in Norfolk, it's, in my opinion, it's hard to have conversations around race, class, and boundaries. Okay. So, boundaries, neighborhoods get drawn any way you want to draw them. So, we're on the east side of St. Paul's Boulevard. Tidewater Park would be considered our neighborhood school. If you go on the west side of St. Paul's Boulevard, somehow Taylor is your neighborhood school, even though Taylor is much further away than Tidewater Park. How can you help us to have a conversation with the public and city council around, and planning commission, housing authority, around do no more harm? So, for example, there's a project under consideration in downtown Norfolk about adding another 120 units of low-income housing tax credit units in St. Paul's quadrant, in Tidewater, Tidewater Park, PB Young attendance zone. So, in my view, if you continue to add low-income subsidized housing units in the neighborhoods where you already have concentrated poverty in the school, then you make it much more difficult to have the socioeconomic diversity that on the academic side, we say, data shows us impacts positive student achievement. So, I'm not sure to what extent you're still having conversations with the, with the city side, but somehow, it was seen to me, at least we should be able to have some conversation around, please don't do any more harm. Even, you mentioned St. Helena and Campustella, so there are additional low-income housing tax credit properties that are either underway, or soon to be underway, in the Campustella and St. Helena attendance zone area, which just makes it even more difficult for us to have the type of impact that we say we want to have on the school side. So, when we've talked about the poverty targets, I didn't really care what the targets were, it was just the idea of saying, this is a goal, and then be able to have conversations with the community and other policymakers around those goals, why they're in the best interest of children on the academic side, and frankly, why they're in the best interest of, in my view, the city on the neighborhood side. I think you all are having some of those conversations. Can you talk to us about how you feel those conversations are going, and whether or not in your recommendations that you come to us with in a month or so, couple of months, is there any way you can begin to help frame that conversation in a way that we can at least do no more harm?
Well, first of all, tying in the data points that you said may be critical here to that discussion, me getting those graduation rates to the articulation may be a critical component. You know, things as simple as that map are pretty obvious points of data that tell me that, you know, some discussion has to be had. And again, it's not a, not just discussion, but action has to happen when it comes to the impact of infrastructure development to the school division. We do have, fortunately, we have a city council member now on our, our committee, which is good, and he's a school guy, which is even better. So, you've got kind of a, you've got a good bridge there. But, that conversation and the data, the data points have to link. And so, when you say things like graduation rates to the direct articulation of gray, or the schools, then that cues me to go back and say, okay, let me pull in that data to see what that means. You know, there's a lot of points of discussion in the comprehensive city plan that we need clarification on still. You know, the Tidewater area is one big one in particular. You know, not filling in housing behind, you know, people that leave, and what's that mean? Well, what, and how long does that mean? And what does that mean to our schools downtown? Because that's a big deal. So, our recommendations have to be sensitive to any sort of infrastructure development, what we anticipate, but not only that, but what we can educate those decision-makers on. Other than that, it's just a communication tool. I mean, I can keep giving data like this, but if approval like that happens, we have to make adjustments, and I don't know how we do that. Because your point about making goals for the percentage goals, we have found to be almost impossible. There's, almost to make a percentage goal may not get to where we want to be. It is goals that have better educational meaning to us, and that get toward where we want to be. But we've, I think we've, we've shared, it's a mathematical impossibility to get all your schools at 70 percent. And so, we have to, we have to get those data points that you're talking about. So, any information like that, that we can tie into this, I'm glad to take.
Can I just follow up, because, because I feel like we're in this, in this cycle, and we don't have enough conversation around, what do we need to do to keep the middle class? What do we need to do to attract the middle class? And so, the, each, each, in my view, at each critical decision point, when the school zoning and school boundary decisions are made, they aren't necessarily driven by academic outcomes, driven by other factors.
Correct.
And then, we make those decisions, so when, you know, it's Black History Month, so I look at stuff. So, you go back and you look at, on Old Dominion University's website, they have a listing of all these schools and what the capacity enrollment was back in 1958, 59. And you look at it, and you can see, you know, Richard Bowling was 100 percent black at that time. Then we made some decisions. Richard Bowling's demographics changed, we saw some achievement gaps close, then we came back and made some other decisions, and now it's almost back to where, where we are 50, 50 years later. And so, somehow, if there's a way to have the conversation around how retaining and attracting the middle is good academically and on, and on the tax-based side, you know, to me, that's elephant in the room that we just won't, can't find a way to talk about. And so, that's why I'm trying to push, if the, if the percent target isn't the right goal, you know, tell us what the right goal is to be able to look at it. Otherwise, I think we stay in this cycle, because what will happen is, as the district faces challenges overall, then prospective families see negative information about the district as a whole, so they don't choose us. If we continue to do things the way that we do things, then we continue to make the conditions worse, and then people don't choose us. And then, each time you give us the presentation, we're going to find that the overall percentage of middle class that flees, black or white, Asian, Latino, whatever it is, will continue us down the path. So, we've done, we've done it one way for 50 years. All I'm trying to figure out is, how do we begin the conversation? So, over the next 50 years, at least maybe it can trend, trend in a, in a different direction, you know? No, we can't do it overnight. I'm just not sure that we're, we're having that, that conversation. I might have teed it up.
To the same point, you know, as far as these statistics that you just pinpointed, those, those, those are clear. They're crystal clear, and you're right, are we having joint conversations around that? We're having them here, but I think a question also would center on, are our goals the same? And what I mean by that is this, when you look at the goals that we have in terms of what we're referring to as wanting to move forward and achieve 100 percent accreditation, I think everybody can say that they want, we want that, everybody. The how, and the changes that have to be made to get us there, and the progression that happens with the school division, and decisions that are made with, in housing, how you structure housing, how you look at zones, and when you make decisions about building low-income, high-density, extreme low-income in an area that's going to feed an already impoverished area, does that, is that counter to our goals? But notice I said "our" goals. So, we have a strategic plan around education, and when, is that aligned with the goals and the mission and vision from what other entities are doing as well? Because until we begin to align those, it's going to be very difficult. We're going to have those conversations, but it's going to be very difficult to see action around it, because if we continue to see housing being developed in a way that is going to further exacerbate a challenge around poverty, we can continue to do what we're doing, and we can get a little bit of headway, but it's not going to. So, I, I think it is about, you know, what, both entities' strategic plans, are they aligned? And, and those conversations, if we've not had those conversations, I mean, we've come together as a community to talk about it, about this, but as far as building patterns and new decisions around that, I think that's, that's, that has huge implications.
So, according to your mention, the importance of the planning commission hearing what we're discussing, and I think in addition to that, this is the kind of discussion we need to have when we have the joint meetings with the mayor and council, with this information presented, and talking about the alignment of the goals between the school district and the city, that's where this conversation has to take place, and I appreciate your questions, Rodney, but I don't think Tracy's the one to get us there. I think we, we have to tee that up and advance that conversation.
Oh, well, I agree. I just, you know, when we first started talking about, so we can run him out of town, it's no problem.
No, but we like Tracy. We like her to be here.
Well, but I, I think that the elephant in the room discussion is important where that, you've known me for a while now, that Tracy's not afraid to have the discussion up front, to say that, look, you know, the middle's class discussion is important. When we did Cincinnati in 2002, a billion-dollar plan, the core of the plan was keeping middle class, because oftentimes, trying to intertwine hyper-poverty with hyper-rich becomes an oil and water situation where the fringe of the glue that holds something together, and it doesn't, that doesn't class us.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't. And so, it doesn't put us in class sense, it's, what it does is it unites us and joins us together. And so, I think that's how we look at it. But how do you continue to attract a middle class? The first goal is to maintain, then to attract, and you do that by the, by your infrastructure. You know, good roads, good schools, you know, just go down the list. And the good schools is the foundation for that. And if we can't get that, we're in trouble.
And Rodney, you had mentioned there are entry points. We have three entry points.
Right.
We have pre-K, we have middle school, and we have high school.
Right.
And so, I cannot emphasize enough, from a parent, from a lifelong Norfolk citizen, resident, that that pre-K is going to be a very critical strategic plan that we can use in order to help grow our middle class, and hopefully, over time, improve upon those statistics of socially-economic diversity that we are trying to attain, but know that we can't mathematically get there.
Sure. So, and I think that down the road, because all the way from President Obama's State of the Union last year, where pre-K was a big initiative, you had no plan to pay for it, but the initiative of saying, we need pre-K, we have to think beyond the current parameters of what we have. So, for instance, are we walking into churches, private entities, to say, how can we partner with you on a resource side to introduce Norfolk public schools? And you have a facility, we have people, or we have, you, we have a facility, you have people? And so, we think beyond the parameters of where pre-K has been in the past, because when you start to talk about that, don't think the church down the street that's operating a great pre-K program is worried about their financial impact of that. And again, the domino of that is, don't, don't put a fear factor into the private sector out there of pre-K. Embrace that and say, how do we make this better to introduce into our public school system? And so, we think beyond the normal way of thinking, much like we have at the high school level. We tend to do it at the ends, we don't ever do it in the middle, but that's how I want to think about pre-K in the future. And so, a good start is going after those grants, making sure we get the resources.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
After this, we're going to definitely have to.
Oh, because I was going to ask, can we yield from some other things?
I'm here.
Since you flew in.
I'll be brief then.
You, you heard me mention earlier the CTE school. So, just going back to the conversation we just had, where we have the new Broad Creek slash Richard Bowling School that's going to be built in the greater Broad Creek area. And, and then there's a whole north side, plus some additional housing, once the old, the existing Richard Bowling is torn down for, for housing. One of the reasons that, that I was intrigued when I first heard you had some thoughts around Booker T, is that I thought that might be some opportunity, because you have vacant land and housing and so forth, to get a, a double bang. Both impact the housing, impact the school. The vice president was here recently and looking at cybersecurity over at Norfolk State and connections there. I know we're down a certain path as far as the facility study, but can you just talk again about your thoughts around the CTE school at Booker T and its impact on the other plans that you have looked at?
Sure. You know, well, this is something that we talked to last year, and just the points on Booker T. When we, again, looking comprehensively at the, at the division, you know, some of the things that kind of stood out to us are the, you know, why not Booker T instead? And with all things being said in this, in the study, in the feasibility study, and not to dismiss those, because I can support those also. But, you know, first of all, infrastructure, just kind of a shot in the arm of infrastructure construction, you know, in that area could be hugely beneficial. The proximity to Norfolk State, local business, even gentrification of neighborhood buildings around that facility that could support a career in technical would have a huge impact in that part of the city. And it's something, again, this is nothing new, we talked about this last year. The challenges of that site obviously came into play. Did it get looked at that, okay, maybe we don't play football Booker T for a year, we displace that somewhere else at Norfolk State for a year or two while we construct and build on the site? All those things to me, and again, I was just coming in kind of fresh on it, were things to make us look at that building. Centralized, you know, very central in area, and, you know, we could attract people back to downtown, and that was huge. And, you know, even looking at, as you look at feeders, schools like Ruffner may have some impact on how you feed a career in technical in the future, as long, and as well as Campustella. And the proximity to that all came into play in my thought process on Booker T Washington. And again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to dismiss the feasibility, and we've talked about that in the past, that there's still very good points to why that is the facility also, so I'm not going to take away from that. But those were all things that, you know, kind of as a fresh look at it, for me, made a lot of sense for that school. And again, it's, the challenges that it offers, I think there's huge programmatic benefits. And not only that, but I think there's huge infrastructure benefits for that part of the city. That's why we gave it mention.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more?
We are.
You leading the witness?
Always. We're, we're, you mentioned earlier about changes in building leadership, administration, school boards, undoing something that previous boards have done. Dr. Stewart talks about it all the time. So, we're, Norfolk is moving towards an elected school board by district. In your experience and the work that you do, is anything that we need to consider as we move- we move in that direction, that perhaps we should prioritize and try to get in place as soon as possible, that representation by district may have positive influence or, or negative influence in terms of the work that, that we've been doing with you?
I've worked with a lot of school boards across the country, and the benefits and challenges go both ways. I'm going to tell you the benefits of an at-large school board, and even at some point, appointed school boards. And I wouldn't necessarily say locally appointed, but, you know, balanced-appointed school boards, is that the real division or district perspective comes into play when you're talking about at-large. And the only example I can use is that, within a district or a ward, that we decide to close a school, and it's your ward. I can show you how it's educationally beneficial to go to a new building, I can show you the financial benefits that go to a division-wide benefit for you that go back in the coffers for a better division. Within the ward, you have votes you have to consider. And if you choose to run again for, for a seat, that, that is maybe foremost on any board member's mind, is how do I make sure my constituents are taken care of before? Because I, you know, there's, there's a matter of not only just wanting to survive as an elected incumbent, but there is a, there is merit to more than one term on a board. You all know that. That the longevity and the, and the value you have over time makes a difference. And so when I'm concentrating on how I can make sure my constituents are happy, and it may hurt the division a little bit, I start to worry about that, obviously. Now, on the other side of the coin, I can say that if I'm in a ward, I can concentrate, and I know my school's better, I can get data better, I'm more in tune to that than a whole division. So again, I think that, I have found it, and again, I'm not going to, I wouldn't be critical of the, of the district boards I've worked with, but I have found it that it is easier to make decisions when it comes to division-wide good from the boards I've worked with that are at a, at a, at large level. Because they understand that what we're trying to go to, and it's not a matter of not being compassionate to the decision on the local building, but it's a matter of the decision being for the division whole first. And that's what I, that's what I've found. And again, it's not a, I'm not going to place judgment, it's an observation I've made over 15 years of working with school boards.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate the work you do.
Thank you. And I'll make this correction, I'm going to get this right back to you. So today, thank you so much.
Thank you. We're at 2.03. And we were, yeah, we're, we're behind schedule for sure here. We would have to definitely do this in 10 minutes, because we need a break for more than one reason. But certainly for the, for the tape as well. If, if we don't think we can tackle this in eight minutes or so, we should go ahead with the break now, with the academic affairs.
2.3?
Yes.
We can make up, right?
Okay, let's go for it.
My day to talk. The Office of Academic Affairs is simply giving you an overview of how the data will look, the student achievement data will look as we deliver it to you in the future, starting next month, when you will be seeing mid-year student achievement data. So we're going to look at two kinds. Dr. Bailey, our super-duper graph designer, will be assisting. As I just run quickly through these, we're going to cut this a little quick. We're going to look at two types of student achievement data and be reporting that out to the board. First of all, we're going to look at data that will allow you to see the percentage of students who are reading and performing math on grade level when they walk into the schoolhouse in September. Then we're going to look at, after all the safety nets and the extra support and intervention has been provided to the children in January, what's the increase in the percentage of students that are now operating on grade level? And then by the end of the year, with more safety nets, more interventions, more support, how much have we now increased the percentage of the students who are reading and operating on grade level? And we'll be using the STAR reading test for that. The second type of data we're going to give you is the quarterly benchmark data. This is the progress monitoring data that we talked about last month. The district looks at grades three through eight, and then the EOC courses in high school for their quarterlies in the fall, winter, and the spring. And this measures the percent of students who are proficient on state standards as they prefer, prepare for the test. So we're just going to show you real quick, because I know we, we need to get this quickly, what this is going to look like. So this is what will look like with the STAR data. If you look at the orange, and this is just a sample, these aren't real numbers anymore. All right, so this is elementary school. The children walk in the door the first week of school, and they take the STAR test, and then we look at what percentage of students in each grade level are reading on grade level or performing math on grade level. This is an aggregate, an example of an aggregate chart. What you will have, at your request, on the, on the, in the board docs, is you'll have the large graph, which will be the district graph, and then under that, you will have the same graph, mini version, for each of your schools. All right, and so then they take the, a test again, and hopefully, a larger percentage of our students are now performing on grade level. And then they take this again at the end of the year, and at the end of the year, you can see this is what we're looking for. A rapid improvement that we have provided enough support and safety nets that our students have gained more than a year's growth within that year's time, and so more and more of our students are now operating on grade level. And so this is how it looks at elementary, and this is how it looks at middle school, same way. All right, progress monitoring, and you've seen these, these graphs before, Dr. Bailey has presented data in these graphs before, and she designed these. So each grade level, we'll look at how well the students have done, and we'll be, once again, testing our students in reading and math. And this is, once again, grade level for the first ones, this is proficiency. They're proficient on the standards that they were taught during the first quarter, and then they were proficient on the second quarter, and then the third quarter. And so this is the percent, the green are the students that are proficient, the yellow, students that need improvement, and the red are the students that did not meet proficiency on those standards. And we have that for elementary school, we have it for the middle school, and then at the high school level, we're doing the EOC. And so this is, as I said, these are just samples that we put together, but next month, Dr. Bailey will be creating these graphs with the actual mid-year data. And, and so this is, I hope, remembering that we want colors and pictures, that this is, this is our design, and we're certainly open to any suggestions you have for improving it or presenting it in a different way. Fast.
All right, any questions? Yes.
When we went through the training with VSBA and the data training, they also showed us scattered plot charts that allowed us, allows you to see all the schools against each other. Is that something that you all will also be looking at?
I'd like to get about that as a way to show, quickly show you a visual illustration of how all of the schools have done based on certain parameters. We could certainly add that.
I would just ask, if there's some way to do that comparison?
Yeah. Dr. Bailey, can you?
You asked for a graph, she can do it.
Yes. As far as for next month, some of the data that you could incorporate into these, this color chart, I was wondering if we could do that with some of our focus, or actually all of our focus on priority schools? Because we received SOL targets, and I would like for us to know where we are with, how close we are to achieving those targets with those schools. And I guess it would go for both the SOLs and the, is it AMOs? AMOs, right. So, because the AMOs would be what we're, what we're being judged upon to determine focus and priority, and the SOL would be accredited, partially accredited, et cetera.
Yes, that's, right. The SOL's accreditation, AMO's focus and priority.
Right, so I would like to see.
I was looking at you there.
I was.
So if we could see how well we are progressing to our, from our baseline to our targets, because we have a 2014, 15 target, 2015, 16, 2016, 17 target, to see where we are with those schools.
Each priority and each focus school?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, Courtney, then move to your left.
And then may I just add another pullout, and that's the three-year warned schools, of which there are five. So I'd like to see those pulled out as well, so that we're looking at all.
The bubble schools?
Yes.
Yeah, the three-year.
Like Jay Cox that we mentioned earlier.
Yeah, focus, priority denied, and three-year warned.
Well, the denied schools are going to be right. We'll, we'll double-label them, because if they're denied, they're either a.
Focus or priority.
Yeah, they're a focus or priority.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, we're good?
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey.
All right, brief recess, and let's try to come back in about 13 minutes.
Time to say?
13 minutes.
13 minutes?
That's good.